We're trying to use the wonderful blessings you've shared about us in our county, but I'm for those that don't have the blessings of life we do. We have business before us and we pray for blessings as we make decisions for county constituents. We pray for those that don't want to age in uniform, keep us safe, watch over them, protect them. But if this don't fit in, we pray in Christ's name, amen. The freezer and cooler project sound like it might be here in two weeks or so, so that's moving along. And they're still holding up right now.
Summer time, chicken seal for about 30 days a year. I believe we're getting chicken seals this year. So that's going to be it. Five South was one of the road conversions. We chipped in seal last week, so it's now complete. We have two more to do that are both our conversions from last year that will finish this year. So we'll get those here in the next couple of weeks. The sign matches continuing to be around 500 East and 11 North, which is our road conversions at night. Sent some trucks up this morning that we should be done with our top pit, a stone up there. So our graders can work that in, roll that in, get that packed in, and then it'll be pretty much ready until the crops come off. Once the crops come off, on the evening, we'll work on our ditches a little more. Meanwhile, we'll start on 500 East with raking the road, adding a base stone to the edges and so on and so forth. You know, do what we can while the crops are on. We always let the farmers get the crops off before we go out into the fields. We have installed five of our nine corners, four remaining, so they're going to process on the schedule here for the next 30 days. As usual, under Five's corn, last week, which was now three weeks ago because of the extra week, farmers really did great with cutting the corn back and doing what they needed to do. Just a reminder, still get some calls. There's still some fields that have to run up the corners. And it's just a safety issue. That's it. We're not trying to be mean and nasty. Just want to keep everyone safe. And then a normal summer reminder, watch out for our crews, their own graves and things like that.
People know what's going on and where it's at, you know, like the call that I know of school and things like that. They can plan accordingly.
Actually, I do try to make sure that people are not much traffic, but I don't always post those. But anytime it's a really congested area, I always try to put something on Facebook to keep everyone up to speed on what's going on.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
First of all, I was in a discussion in terms of track application. Application out for the project is part of the project. We're going to have a discussion of the project. The project exceeds its significant investment. For 2022, given the total of the county's here for next year. The project cost, including from design and engineering through construction inspection, just be about $7.3 million. So the coverage would be just shy of about $300,000. As far as to do that through, it's actually about an 82% of the road from the state. It's part of a one-time, one-time bond issue that the state's running with all the tracks.
We need to offer this up in terms of even applying to show that we have the backing forward to apply for the grant.
This is only a critical part of the process. Without this, we consider it a failure. If we don't get it, this goes on the side.
This is a huge return on investment, more than anything I can do to get any money back into the county of West County.
It works all the other roads of the panel.
The only thing I'm like about it is it affects the whole county. It's not just a benefit to one industry or one community. It affects the whole county. So I'm in favor of it.
This is good. Senator Lemon, I mean Senator Holm and Matt Lee. And trying to get Jim Banks, Don Lee, Quon and Youngs on board. So I mean, with this level, we're working on some kind of speaking up later in the meeting. So those are the roads that we discussed. So we can raise. Three is the updates for 2018. It's just kind of a few of the two thousand eighteen implications. And it's a, I'd say, look, imagine for me on the way. Stuff. And the next two, we think about submitted. So I mean, have we approved LTAC for the crossings? So I mean, does anyone, any crossings application is for end of September. So that's the crossings this year for a third application. So there's a lot of different running applications here for West County. First of all, sales, current federal aid project. Looking at capex and contracts for some, I've been working with to also the couple of collaborations and contract. All of this is mine. The first step, when I signed the contract with you, it's a 300 in terms analysis. Same contract with us for the reimbursement. And then once we, this actually, we have different versions through fiscal years. It's difficult to predict, but it's something that at least failures lead to. Not some reimbursement to the county for P E right of way until further away, it's away from them to control costs. Actually, I'll free you. So Bridge 193, that's our county of 300 miles, over the Long Beach River. The damage portion is similar, but less than 300. So we finished that up over King. Sure did repair some areas that weren't necessarily their fault. It was the vehicles that were striking. Because they were willing to do that for us. That's it. She was first to correct the bridge. Because apparently, by state's logic, they should have it so strong. For taking something which across that bridge. So we're looking at the questions for some sort of. I'm looking at the price and the simple cost and we're going to group up something for you.
Project that's matched with community pressing.
It's possible. These are from security, also for the set through cameras with trip. Essentially, it's like a trip. But that would help to create some to, to as well as a function system for enforcement. So look at that. I forgot what our options are there as well. So as always, we're having to address because there's a lot of.
Governor, Deputy Executive Director, and I also am the government chairperson for this year's campaign. I'm going to ask your permission or blessing to, as we've done in the past, reach out to some of the elected officials, department heads, to request more permission to engage some county employees as far as donations to United Wake Campaign. The United Wake Campaign in West County has never received any government money. It's all from private individuals. And I just want to stress upon the importance of the trial site. Projects that you made all over the county. It's just vital. From Squirrel to Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, there's just a lot of programs that are very important. And today, I will need to raise money. And lastly, in fact, in the past 12 years, we've lost some heavy hitters. And I'll just mention, you know, Frank Homellick, which was some heavy hitters. And it's tough to make up, you know, the money that's lost. But we just kept working on it and still progressing. So that's what I'm asking permission.
No, but you are welcome to join me this month.
Three zero. Thanks.
I want to start as just a quick example of what we're going to discuss. The first comparison actually shows on previous years how we ended with the number of trips that we provided through our West County. And what we provided year to date, which is through the end of July, 2024 trips so far. It's relatively close to last year. Yeah, my name is. So the cumulative comparison actually shows every year through the end of July. So we're relatively close to last year, just right there, like saying maybe about 500 trips less. Um, this next report is the number of trip comparison. And what it does is we've averaged per month. The number of trips that we provided, one relatively close to last year. Last year, we averaged 3,297 and so far this year, we've averaged 4,000. So no big difference. Trips per business day, check this on picture. Average per business day for every year in last year, I averaged 150 days. Average 156 trips a day. And from the last graph that you have, just a reminder, each group, like each group, which is 18 of 59, still rates 44% as far as the number of trips that they take. So we're second with 47%. Still, it's counting 12 at 16%. And then at 05 hours of age are at 3% of the ridership in the trips. Any questions?
I wonder if I've ever asked you this. Is there a minimum age to be, that you require of a child to ride?
No. There is a minimum age that can ride by themselves.
That's what I'm going. Yeah, by themselves.
Yes, they have to be fully, well, much above themselves because we do take to preschool and head start and things like that. So as long as they're at least four, they're able to ride by themselves. But otherwise, that a parent or guardian has to ride with them.
I mean, drivers are trained. Yeah, that's just part of the index regulations, which is written about the federal transit. So it represents 819,000 vehicles, which applies to public transit in the counties for college share. So what I have, any other questions?
Thanks.
So what I have, Bill, is the billing in order to be reimbursed for our expenses. For the second quarter, it was $146,960 in expenses. And what you're designing today is a voucher for $108,400. Federal income is $69,840 and the state is $38,560. And then from our general fund, we earned $31,280, which is a portion of county's money and the additional grants that I write in order to make the pocket of money that we need in order to provide public transit.
So just me or is that? Let's see. Want to, I don't know.
I updated. The county's required apparently to adopt a Title VI implementation plan. And essentially, the plan that I drafted based on is they sent me, I don't know, three different counties. But I also said, it was 2012, was it? It won't say a minute after. $50,000. Whatever. So we have to adopt the implementation plan. I prepared one, sent it to you. And I would ask that you consider the adoption of that plan. And prepare a resolution and make you one of the documents that we need, they need for in line in the application. If those are mentioned on all of this.
This is a lot of work.
To support the development of the 646, we didn't get to build this plane in this format. Now something we.
Now we do.
And I got that and got some.
It is 2018-07. 2018. Very good. Accidentally stamped her original page that's accidentally stapled. So that was an accident. 100th birthday. We have our question to the deputy mayor. Mention.